Okay, thank you all for being patient. Okay, once again, good afternoon and welcome to the Board of Trustees Regular Board Meeting. Today's Tuesday, June 27, 2023, and I call this meeting to order at exactly 5:31 PM. Roll call. Dr. Ariel Cruz. Mr. Rudy Corona.
President.
Mr. Fritozo Gomez.
Present.
Mr. Oscar Medrano.
Present.
Mr. Alex Reyna.
Present.
Mr. Mario Silva.
Present.
Mr. Servillon.
Present.
Mr. Torres. Not present. Okay, let's move on to 1.2. Pledge of Allegiance to the United States and Texas Flag and 1.3 Invocation, Mr. Corona.
Yes, good evening. So, at this time, we're going to have Ms. Camila Alejandra Martinez doing our pledge of allegiance and invocation.
If I may say a little bit about her. Ms. Camila Alejandra Martinez is the daughter of Yudel and Betty Martinez. She is 11 years old and just finished her elementary years at Judge Oscar de la Fuente Elementary. She will be starting middle school at Berta Cavassa. Her favorite subject is math and loves to play soccer. Her accomplishments include being on the A-B honor roll and traveling across the U.S. and Mexico to compete in soccer tournaments with her team's football club, Dallas and Team USA. She plans on continuing to excel in school and hopes to earn a scholarship to play soccer. Her future goals are to be a professional soccer player with an electrical engineering degree. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Please remain standing from both sides.
Loving and gracious God, we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our school district, and for all of our staff members. We ask that you bless them abundantly and we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us insight to lead with integrity that our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. Lord Jesus, we also ask for your peace and comfort for the scholars, staff, and family of our beloved Mrs. Maria Elizondo. May she rest in eternal peace. All glory be to you, loving God, now and always through Christ and the Holy Spirit forever and ever. Amen. You may be seated.
Ms. Martinez? Ms. Martinez?
Camila.
Camila? We have a little something to present to you. Are we going to go down? Are we going to go down and take a picture? Yeah, we're going to go down. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to Agenda Item Number Two, Special Recognitions. Mr. Servillon?
So, as usual, we have a lot of our students to celebrate today because great things are always happening at San Benito CISD, and it's our students that keep us there, right? What they do day in and day out, and even when they're not in school, we are so proud of them. So with that, I am going to call Ms. Isabel Gonzalez up to help us with the recognition.
Good evening, Board President Lopez, Trustees, and Superintendent Servillon. Tonight, we'll be honoring various groups of students from our middle school choirs to chess teams to our female athletes. They have had amazing successes throughout this school year, and you're going to see just what they've done. To begin, we're going to ask Mr. Edadio Martinez, our Director of Choirs. He's going to introduce or he's going to explain the steps that our middle school students took to get to the state regional level.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Edadio Martinez, and I'm the Director of Choirs for San Benito CISD. Every year, our middle school choir students compete in the TMEA region auditions in the vocal division. This competition has every participating student spanning from Brownsville all the way to Donna learn five musical selections, many of which are in foreign languages, and perform them as solos in front of a number of judges. Out of nearly 1,000 students who competed in our region, this year, the San Benito Middle School Choirs from Berta Cavassa, Miller Jordan, and Riverside had a total of 40 region students selected into the all-region choir, which is the most students we have ever had represented in this prestigious ensemble. We're very proud of these students and their choir directors, and we look forward to the continued success of our choir programs here in San Benito CISD.
We're going to begin with our Berta Cavassa middle school students that made the Region 28 Honor Choir. Javier Martinez, first chair. Martin Limón, second chair. Owen Gonzalez, ninth chair. Gilbert García, 12th chair. Ayase Artiaga, 13th chair. Giovanni Davila, 13th chair. Brian Chavez, 16th chair. Aaron Ortiz, 18th chair. Enrique Maldonado, 20th chair. Nicholas Inojosa, 21st chair. Caleb Leal, 23rd chair. Jeremiah Kendrick, 24th chair. Faith Gomez, 24th chair. Caitlin Martinez, 30th chair. Nathan Salinas, 31st chair. And Elijah Cortez, 35th chair. There, under the direction of Sarah Guerra and Joseph Hernandez. If they can come in as well. While we take a group photo of these students, if their parents are in the audience, please stand and be recognized. Also, under the direction of Sarah Guerra and Joseph Hernandez, is our 8th grade Region 28 Honor Choir. Melody Cardosa, 8th chair. Miranda Mata, 16th chair. Kristy Obregón, 17th chair. Brianna Galván, 24th chair. And Madison Kowalski, 31st chair. If y'all will come back for a group photo. If parents of these students are in the audience, please stand and be recognized. Also, under the direction of Ms. Guerra and Mr. Hernandez, is our 7th grade Regional Honor Choir. Calista Olivares, 6th chair. Giselle Rodríguez, 7th chair. Miabella Lara, 14th chair. Cynthia Vázquez, 27th chair. Annabeth Aguirre, 29th chair. Kenia Villanueva, 33rd chair. And Melissa Rosales, 35th chair. Will the parents of these students please stand and be recognized? We're now calling our Miller Jordan Middle School students that made it to the middle school choir. Mackenzie Jimenez, 16th chair. Lidia Lee Gonzalez, 30th chair. Juliana Mahrez, 35th chair. And there, under the direction of Ezekiel Lira. If her parents are in the audience, will you please stand to be recognized? We move on to our Riverside Middle School Honor Choir honorees. Sarah Leal Carmona, 2nd chair. Magdalia Morales, 14th chair. Kiana Arellano, 18th chair. April Salas, 9th chair. Elisa García, 32nd chair. Camila Rodríguez, 35th chair. Cassandra Salazar, 19th chair. Yareli Carrillo, 23rd chair. And Marco Sierra, 33rd chair. These students perform under the direction of George Moreno, Head Choir Director, and Claudia Casanova Morán, Assistant Choir Director. Will the parents of these students please stand and be recognized? We're now going to recognize our Berta Cavassa Middle School Chess Team. I'm going to call the team up before we say everything that they did. Christian Gomez. Jacob Montoya. Damian Campos. Jedrian Arroyo Baiz. Sebastian Salivar. Nathan Rada. These students are under the direction of Albert Sánchez, After School Program Site Coordinator. Eric Gevara, Chess Coach. Alfredo Infante, Assistant Chess Coach. And Saul Ibada, Campus Principal. This group of chess students made it to the 2223 Chess Middle School National Championships in Round Rock, Texas, where the team placed 10th. Christian placed 6th in the Under 1,700. Damian was in the Under 1,100 team. Jedrian was 10th place out of 27. And Christian Gomez was, okay, the 6th place individual under 1,700. Will the parents of these young men please stand and be recognized? For this next group, we're going to be here a while. We're going to bring in our Lady Hounds Varsity Softball Team. Sierra Herrera. Bethany Aguilar. Elisa Rubio. Leila Joe López. Jenna Torres. Kylie Sanchez. Kiara Dominguez. Alia Puente. Amira Rodríguez. Angelina Gigi García. Emily Delgado. Josana Montes. Mia Gonzalez. Jade Maya. And Manager Patricia Mendiola. Coach Martinez did explain that some of the young ladies on the team are already at their college orientations. So now, I'll call in Head Coach Elias Martinez. Assistant Coaches Dulio Garza. Gilbert Rodríguez. Gus Gonzalez. And Norma Rodríguez. Okay, now, I'm going to let you all know exactly what they did. This year, the Lady Hounds Varsity Softball Team were the 2023 UIL Texas Class 6A Region 4 Softball District Champions, Bi-District Champions, Area Champions, Regional Quarterfinal Champions, Regional Semi-Final Champions, Regional Final Champions, and State Semi-Finalists. In addition, we have several 326A All-District selections. Bethany Aguilar, All-District Try MVP. Emily Delgado, All-District Try MVP. Angelina García, First Team All-District. Mia Gonzalez, Designated Player of the Year. Leila López, First Team All-District. Josana Montes, Try Offensive Player of the Year. Amira Rodríguez, All-District Try MVP. Elisa Rubio, First Team All-District. Kylie Sanchez, First Team All-District. Jenna Torres, First Team All-District. Our All-Academic Team includes Bethany Aguilar, Emily Delgado, Angelina García, Mia López, Leila López, Josana Montes, Amira Rodríguez, Elisa Rubio, Kylie Sanchez, Jenna Torres, and Patricia Mendiola. Congratulations to... I have like two more pages to go. Congratulations to Emily Delgado, Elisa Rubio, and Amira Rodríguez on making the All-State Softball Team. Congratulations to Elisa Rubio and Bethany Aguilar on making the All-State Academic Team. We also have Coach Elias Martinez, the 326A Coach of the Year. With the first-ever 40-win season. The ladies participated in the Cal Allen Tournament, where they were named champions, the Portland Tournament, where they placed 4th, and Miras' Try Championships. If the parents of these fine individuals are here, please stand and be recognized. Ladies coaches, it was an exceptional season, and we are so proud of you. We have one last group of exceptional athletes. They're the San Benito High School Girls Track and Field, where they were the 326A Area and Regional Qualifiers. Madeline Cardenas. Area and Regional. Madeline Becerra, Area and Regional. Aleila Cruz, Area and Regional. Rochelle Mendez, Area and Regional. Evelyn Galván, Area and Regional. Yasmin Bernabé, Area and Regional. Brianna Ramírez, Area. Hayden Rodríguez, Area. Ruby Martinez, Area. Their Head Coach is Alia Gonzalez, and Assistant Coaches Gus Zabaleta, Deandra Padilla, and Valde Olivares. Will the parents of these athletes please stand and be recognized if you're in the audience? This concludes the Board Recognition portion of this meeting. Thank you.
Well, that was pretty exciting. Let's move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Public Comment. I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Rudy Corona.
Yes, sir. This evening, I'd like to read something before we do start our public comment. The public comment portion of our meeting is available to members of the public according to the following. At regular board meetings, the Board shall permit public comment regardless of whether the topic is an item on the agenda posted with notice of the meeting. All the other board meetings, public comments shall be limited to items on the agenda posted with notice of the meeting. Anyone who would like to speak during public comment must sign in prior to the start of the meeting and list the topics they want to discuss, and individuals, public comments to the Board shall not exceed five minutes per meeting. Please keep your comments or criticisms civil and courteous. Please avoid using profanity and refrain from making personal attacks on others during your opportunity to speak. We ask that you do not discuss students who are not your own children. In addition, the participating individual shall adhere to the following. State their full name, what organization or group, if any, is being represented. Indicate the topic about which they wish to speak. Shall refrain from commenting directly to any individual, employee, or public official by name, but may refer to the specific employment area, job title, or the Board as a whole. And shall refrain from attacks on individuals. Lastly, if after at least one warning from the presiding officer, any individual continues to disrupt the meeting by his or her words or actions, presiding officer may request assistance from law enforcement officials to have the individual removed from the meeting. If a speaker is seeking board resolution of a specific complaint, that concern should be addressed through the district's grievance process. District Policy DGBA has been established for addressing employee complaints. Policy FNG is the avenue for filing parent complaints. And Policy GF addresses community member complaints. Grievance forms can be obtained at any campus administration office or the District Central Administration Office. Thank you. Our first public speaker that we do have for public comment is Jay Peña. Welcome, Mr. Peña.
Thank you, Mr. Board Secretary, Mr. Corona, Mr. President, Superintendent, Honorable Members of the Board, if I may proceed with this public comment.
Give me one second. Are you going to hold time? Ms. Servillon will hold your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. President and members of the school board, this statement is not a criticism of your work. The service you offer to this community is, I'm sure, recognized and well-respected, and I'm all too familiar with it. This statement is brought forth as a response to a public matter concerning a minor child, and it is in reference to Consent Agenda Item 8, the approval of minutes for the meetings held in part on May 16. And during this and other school board meetings, a particular individual has unfortunately usurped the First Amendment right to public comment and misused the privilege of freedom of speech to engage in behavior that is both inappropriate and harmful to a minor child. And I'm here on behalf of that minor child. Now, San Benito, I'm sure adopts its meetings as a matter of public record, and it supplements that record with audio/video recordings that are posted on sites like YouTube, and that's done as a matter of policy. And for public reference... And for public record, I'd like to reference some of these prior meetings that I'm going to be addressing along with start points. It's not inclusive. But January 17th, 2023, there's a meeting, and I believe the commenter starts at the 53-minute mark. On January 26th, 2023, the commenter starts at the 4-minute 22nd mark. On February 16th, 2023, the commenter starts at the 36-minute mark. On March 21st, 2023, I believe at the 45-minute 25-second mark. May 16th, 2023, is the last time that I guess she mentioned her charade against my client, and it was at the 1-hour 26-minute 24-second mark. Now, the individual has acted with disregard for the truth, leaving unfounded and slanderous accusations against the minor in question, and her actions are recorded in the public record. And because they're widely circulated on YouTube, this forces us, as the minor's legal representative, to seek redress via the same channels that she used to propagate her misleading claims against him. And so disguising her statements as "evidence" and "proof," she has wrongfully accused our client of engaging in illicit activities such as vaping within school premises, among other things. Her unfounded claims involving allegations of truancy, possession of illegal substances, and potential felony charges stretch the bounds of what can be considered decent behavior and may indeed cross the boundary into illegal activity. And so this individual seems to be using our client, a minor, as a pawn in some form of political power play with local school board members and politicians. And we're adults, and that's not something that we can allow to happen. This strategy is deeply hypocritical, and I'd like to point out, as evidenced in the January 17th school board meeting, it's on YouTube at the 1-hour 2-minute 14-second mark, where she herself has admitted to forgetting to submit medical excuses against accusations of her own child's truancy, yet demands that the rules be applied equally to all the other students. It seems she believes that exceptions should only be made and excuses accepted for her while everyone else is viewed as problematic. And so such behavior directed against a minor is appalling, and it's inexcusable, and the accusations are not just questionable, they're reprehensible. And the individual in question, despite speaking out against bullying at the March 21st meeting at the 45, 46-minute marks, I'd like to point out, she appears to be engaging in exactly that kind of behavior. And so it's expected that this individual corrects, clarifies, and retracts the false statements made against our client on the school district's public record, where she placed them. And an apology from her to the minor, who has had to endure this ordeal due to false accusations, would also be appropriate, and these steps should be taken both here and on her widely-used platform on Facebook, where she continues to propagate her falsehoods. And to make this clear, these actions are not just suggested, they're actually demanded on our client's behalf, and if they're not completed satisfactorily by her, be assured that every legal resource available to our client will be used to correct the situation, including a defamation lawsuit, not against the district, but against this individual. So this statement serves as a reminder of the severity of defamation under Texas law, particularly when it concerns the school's children. And for her info, obscuring the identity of our client does not escape potential liability. The information presented in her public and online comments is more than enough for any reasonable person to identify him. And I thank you, school board. I believe that's the end of my time.
Yes, sir.
With the school board's permission, I would like to be excused.
Thank you, Mr. Benya. Appreciate your time. Okay, the second person we have is Mr. Adán Osierro. Welcome, Mr. Osierro.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Trustees, Superintendent Edvion, Mr. Board President. My name is Adán Osierro. I'm employed with the school district. I'm here as a community member. First of all, I want to thank the district. Before I get started, thank the district for their discretion regarding recent investigations on employees. It was handled very professionally, and as an employee, I appreciate that. For the compensation plan, I see that we are doing the $100 supply allotment, again, if approved. Just two points on that. For last year, if an employee did not use their funds or did not fully use their funds, would that money carry over? If that could be discussed, I would appreciate that. And if this year, I requested it previously, but once again, if we could, instead of going through the PO process where we have to submit an application stating what we're going to use the money for, if that could go through direct deposit or go back to being cash, the PO process is very slow, and the advantage of direct deposit or cash is the flexibility we have in terms of time. If there's supplies that we need for students in the classroom by the first day of school, we can use that money. We do not have to go through the PO process. And again, if there's an issue with how the money's being used, we can sign an acknowledgement form stating that the money's to be used on supplies. Another thing that I would appreciate on the compensation plan, if that could come up during discussion, is clarity on the teacher pay scale. It seems that was reduced, but maybe I'm misinterpreting that. Moving on to my next topic. First of all, I want to thank the school board for the inclusion of, or the school district for inclusion of PERS and end-of-year awards. As a PERS professional, it means even more that it came from listening to survey responses over time with San Benito CISD. I've heard comments from fellow education support professionals, these are your hourly employees, that they feel like second-class employees, and someone once said, you know, they don't care about us. But with the end-of-year awards, with the way that raises are calculated now, with how they were adjusted last year, we're taking steps in the right direction. But I would like to suggest a policy that keeps that momentum going, and that is implementing due process for at-will employees. As we know, at-will employees can be dismissed, terminated at any time for almost any reason. Due process is the implementation of a fair procedural process involving investigation and progressive discipline prior to termination of employment. Why do we need due process? It protects against unjust terminations. It prevents a hostile work environment. It provides dignity, decency, justice, and respect for all employees, and it eliminates the fear of job insecurity. Now, how does the district benefit? Due process can serve as a powerful tool for recruitment and retention. Hypothetically, if I'm considering a position between Harlingen and SBCISD, I'm going to choose the job with more job security, and that would be SBCISD if it were to implement due process. It's also an inexpensive way of improving the quality of the position. It also reduces turnover, thereby reducing costs in finding replacements for staff that leaves. Due process also promotes positive relationship between employee and supervisors, and in case of grievances, it also protects the district with a paper trail. There are two nearby school districts, McAllen ISD and Bronco ISD, that have this in their I've made copies for the board as well as Mr. Gaiegels, if you would like to take a look, if I could approach the bench, and maybe something to consider. And that's it for my comment. Thank you.
Next, yes, he has to. Next, we do have Ms. Lupita.
Good evening, Board President and community. I'm here today. My first one is going to be on the fund balance. I did see the video, and I did hear that it was, I think, 2.3 million. And that left our money, is that going to be used, like, do you think, maybe on the hourly or maybe students? I know this year, that FFA, they were kind of short, that they had to pay for their, I guess, their shots, they had to pay a little bit extra. But I'm really thinking more on the hourly. I know that the teachers get paid very well here in San Benito, because I did see all the districts around, and let me tell you, San Benito gets paid very well. Cheerleaders, sponsors, I saw, Los Fresnos gets paid $500. San Benito gets paid $7,000. So our teachers are awesome, and they're getting paid very well, and I think that's great. But with that compensation plan that I did see as well, maybe you can give more to the hourly. I mean, you have our maintenance, custodians, our cafeteria workers. These individuals, they also have a trade, and they take very pride, they take highly pride on their trade. And I think, as a taxpayer, as a registered voter, and as a community of this member, I think that would be awesome, and we would go ahead and give them a little bit more. And I don't think 2% would be good. You're talking about 30 cents, 50 cents. These people work right now, maintenance, they're working at 115 degrees outside, and they're working for San Benito ISD. So they can be more productive, they can have a cleaner area for students, and this is what we want. We want everybody's moral to be high. You know, they're special, just like everybody else. They're very important employees, and I want you to think about it, I really do. And like I said on that budget, on the compensation plan, I did see on the compensation plan they were making new jobs. One of them that I did see that did catch my eye was a special curriculum new position. At the midpoint for that one that I did download it, it's $61,000. Special curriculum, we already have an executive curriculum. She has directors under her. Why would we want to make another job? We have excellent employees here already as well, with degrees, that that would be also good for them to see, you know what, we have somebody here. Let's go ahead and see if they can work something out, instead of creating new jobs. New jobs that apparently sometimes you say, there's no money, and who gets left out? The hourly do. And I praise everybody, believe me, I do. Another thing, somebody did ask me on the raw preliminary results. I know by now you know where they stand, and hopefully the board can see. And before there's any changes, I hope you take into consideration how these principals and teachers did. Because guess what? At the end of the day, who's going to get affected are who? The students. And that's here, we're here to see how we can help. Maybe a teacher's struggling, maybe the principal can't get along with the teachers, what have you? Then guess what? We have administrators here that can go in and say, what's going on? How can I help you? What's going on? That you can't be productive in class? What's going on? So some teachers did ask me, before they moved principals, and I know one of the principals, they really can't get along. They cannot get along with her for whatever they try. And you know what? I have nephews in schools, in that school. I have nephews and nieces going to that elementary school. And I would really appreciate it if you could look before you move these principals to somewhere where they cannot do what they're supposed to. I really want you to be vigilant. You know, we have a Nixon curriculum over here, we have HR, we have executives. Let's put them to use. This is what they're here for. They're here because they're here because they want to work for San Benito, and they want to make us better, and that's our always stride for that. And my last topic, Superintendent Evaluation. I just hope you take into consideration that the evaluation is followed by her contract, 2.1. You know, it's really important.
Thank you, Ms. Lupita. Okay, next we have Ms. Rosalinda G. García.
Good evening, and congratulations to all the, after the elections, to the board members. My topic is, what do you all hear about public comment? Last few meetings, months, we've had a lot of, it sure hasn't been civil and courteous, especially from people like Lupita B. and Lori. I want to apologize. Mr. Ramiro Moreno, he did not deserve that treatment. And our district leader, whom I admire a lot, she does not deserve that treatment. And with all this public comment, this vicious comments, never once did I hear from a tenured board member who's now the president. Years ago, a few years ago, it bothered him a lot, all the negativity. His comments were, this is an administrative process in this school district, that if you have any issues or concerns, you can take that avenue. But coming to a board meeting and discussing the same things over and over and making a mockery of the whole process, and our whole school district, negativity, you know, it's sad. You know, all of that, it bothered him then, but he couldn't stand up and stop these women because, in my opinion, he enjoyed it. He enjoyed it. And on the superintendent's contract, it's coming up. She has gotten us over the cheerleader tryout incidents, the bond construction, she came into that, the forensic audit, the computer breach, the administrators' investigations put on leave, et cetera, et cetera. By this time, Dr. Carmen was probably making $20,000 more, because I looked at his contract. I tabulated them. Has she gotten a penny more? And on the, I know you'll be discussing the bond. A few years ago, when that company, Bryton, was selected, right away, the board president, he was a member there, let's take it back doors to discuss it. Well, when you discuss it today, keep the district first, not the vendors. You were hired, you were elected to protect the interests of the district, not the vendors. And when we saw that forensic audit, we had presented, the board president kept over and over defending Bryton. That's my comment and my observation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. García. Next, we have Lori M. Hernández. Welcome, Ms. Hernández.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent, you have allowed substantial damage to my family, and you cannot tell me this is not an act of retaliation due to speaking up at board meetings. You, Superintendent, allowed an environment where certain administrators feel they can disrespect children and families, and it is inappropriate that they use their titles as powerful weapons. At VMA, you allowed your administrator to interrupt my public comment with a verbal utterance during my time with the board. According to your newly-adopted BED Local policy and Penal Code 42.05, under disruption, she should have been stopped or escorted out of the room due to her multiple disruptions, and you failed to do so. Her unethical behavior, malicious tactic, prohibited conduct, and intent to hurt are unacceptable. And if she had the audacity to interrupt my public comment in the eyes of the public, can you imagine what she does behind closed doors to our children? As an administrator, whether you agree or you disagree, you must hold yourself to higher standards. It is evident that she acts on impulse. I do not feel comfortable for the safety and well-being of my daughter and children and other children under her leadership and supervision. Now, at the San Benito High School, certain administrators found my daughter guilty without proper justification, or shall I rephrase that, without thorough investigation. As a result, you allowed them to remove my daughter, the captain of the cheer team, based on hearsay and witness statements from a particular individual and her group of friends. based on hearsay and witness statements from a particular individual and her group of friends instead of factual evidence from police officers, the judge, and video surveillance. My daughter was walking alone at the very edge of the sidewalk, minding her business, and she had nowhere to move. Her witness was the video surveillance, which we requested is the only factual evidence and you failed to use it. You allowed slander to my daughter's name and title. And your administrators created further animosity and tension and opened doors for bullying. This is entirely ridiculous and y'all went too far this time. My daughter is innocent and I request all individuals who falsify legal statements and documents held accountable for their false allegations and your administrators and personnel involved in the decision-making be removed or demoted for causing harm resounding in mental anguish. These misconceptions and retaliation against me and my family must stop immediately. I am not a people pleaser and I'm going to offend people because they may not agree with me and that's okay, it's the inevitable. But like my pastor says, if I do not stand up for what I feel is right, I'm going to turn around and offend the one who created me. Agree with me or not, a video does not lie. As a remedy, I request my daughter's coaches, the administrators, including you, superintendent, and the school board, view the video with me present and you will see who the victim is and the damage your administrators have caused. You allowed this, superintendent, and this is an injustice to my daughter. Now that the law proved my daughter innocent, your administrators want to make this a bullying case and labeled my daughter as a perpetrator due to the individual statements of the same group? What are we doing? This is, there is no documentation of my daughter being a bully, nor was I ever informed of this allegation. No administrator or coach has given me a bad report on her and she has absolutely no demerits. So where are we getting this information from? I would like to know that. I am very personal and I'm not about starting social wars on media platforms, but I will stand for what is right. I would not be doing my job as a mother if I do not advocate for my daughter when she is in the right. I am not my children's friend, I am their mother and I do not condone inappropriate behavior. I have raised my children with respect and I would be the first to remove them from any team if they do not abide by the standards I set forth. It's called tough love. It is my daughter's senior year and you have already stripped her of her memories, her passion, and everything she has worked incredibly hard for. Most importantly, you caused substantial damage. And now I ask you, board, to use your better judgment, take everything that I have said into consideration, and do a thorough investigation because when I get to my grievance, because I will be there, I would like to see documentation of bullying. I would like to see records. Nobody has contacted me regarding bullying, nobody has spoken to my daughter about bullying. She does not have any demerits. And again, I know many of you board members here and I do not come to you guys.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time, thank you, ma'am.
I appreciate it.
Okay, at this time, let's move on to agenda item number four, superintendent report. Ms. Arvion.
Yes, good evening, everybody. So as usual, I have some awesome updates to give our community about our students, their learning and academic enrichment that's coming for the next school year. Our after-school program, and I have Ms. Casas here, if she could come up and give like a couple of words, not too much. Our after-school program has received grant funds for all our campuses, which means we are extending opportunities for our kids through the after-school program. So we got that awesome news recently. Ms. Casas?
Hi, board president, board members, Ms. Arvion, superintendent. We're excited to announce that our department, our district, received the Cycle Twelve Award for Twenty-First Century Communities, Community Learning Centers. So our, our district was awarded one million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand and some, some change. And so, there will be additional funds that they will probably give us in addition to that if we offer high-impact tutoring at our grant campuses that we were awarded. So now we will have sixteen campuses that will be full grant campuses. So we're very excited and we just completed our budget today and we balanced it out today and we submitted recommendations as well for seven site coordinators. In addition, it's open, opening up the opportunity for a total, with the seven, a total of eleven full-time positions for our district.
Awesome. So great job, Ms. Casas, to you, your staff, and of course, our kids are going to benefit greatly. Great job.
I have a question, how long is a grant?
The grant is for five years. So the Cycle Twelve is five years, Cycle Eleven, the one that we currently have, we have an additional three years with it.
Yes, thank you.
So awesome, it's just, I'm just real quick, it's awesome that, it's awesome to hear that and, and once again, we can provide, you know, the students the resources they need to continue, but it's just a testament to the leadership we have in that role there at the after-school program. I want to thank you so much because I know it's, it's tough and, and these grants are not easy to get, but you know, with your, with your leadership and your dedication, it's very obvious that we're, we're going places.
Thank you all, thank you all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Casas.
Thank you, Ms. Casas.
Appreciate you too.
Thank you.
Okay.
There was about a hundred and thirty-five applicants and it was about forty-some that were awarded.
Yay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, so now I'll continue. Additionally, our Greyhound Online Academy that serves students virtually this school year has been approved for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as well. Our online academy serves students K through eight this past school year, but we're ecstatic to announce that thanks to the way that our proposal was written and the multiple meetings that Dr. McGee had with TEA, they have agreed to our ninth grade expansion for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Since we currently house eighth grade students, so we will be able to offer those eighth grade students that option. Dr. McGee, did you want to say anything about that? Yes. You want to speak from there? No, go ahead now, you're halfway down.
Good evening, Board, President Lopez, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Arvion. Yes, we are excited about Go Academy and the option. Our students have worked incredibly hard, our staff is amazing, our administrators are amazing. And just some quick facts about the impact. We had at Go Academy, the average attendance was over ninety-six percent, which was one of the highest in the district. In terms of funding, we brought in an estimated six hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. This academy runs not at a deficit, but at a benefit from the district, so we're adding additional funds of about two hundred thousand dollars. I think about when we're asking like raises or, you know, stipends or incentive payments, what that extra money can do from one academy and a strong team and a board that's committed to excellence for our students, staff, and community. Thank you.
And lastly, I won't bring anybody else up, but lastly, at VMA, we're ready to hit the ground running with our Collegian Academy. Our teachers, administrators have been going through rigorous training, setting up classrooms for our sixth through eighth graders. Also, we have our Global Leadership Academy, which is housed at Fred Booth Elementary for grades pre-K through K, I'm sorry, pre-K through fifth, with a focus on the world around us. We are going to use project-based learning and concentrating on economic structures, social justice, and the use of technology to explore various countries. So it's truly a great day, a great time to be a Greyhound. Congratulations to everybody.
Okay, thank you all so much for that report. Let's move on to agenda number five, reports, five point one, academic health report.
Yes, sir. So today we're going to walk you through the board, actually how STAR is evolving and how our accountability system is evolving as well. We have Mr. Cantu and we also have Mrs. Abrigo here today that put together a very telling account of our accountability system. So with that, I'll hand that over to them.
Good evening, President Lopez, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Arvion. We're glad to be here. Again, like Ms. Arvion stated, we are going to give you a quick refresher on the accountability system for 2023. In this refresher, you're going to see what the current accountability system has, what changes have been made, some comparable data from our what-if we were in 2022 with this accountability system, and a timeline. And leading us in this presentation today is going to be Mrs. Kathy Abrigo.
Thank you. You all see this in front of you, yes? Okay, so we're going to start, no? Oh, no. Okay. We'll pause.
And if you have any questions during the presentation, please ask us, you know, and we'll elaborate from there as well.
Y'all see it? Okay, awesome. So right now what you see is a table and the table has all of our measures on the left and then we're going to talk about any changes in calculation or grading. So for STAR performance, which looks at... Oh, yeah, sorry, not my clicker. Okay, so for STAR performance, that looks at all tests, all grade levels, all subjects. There is no changes in calculation, there's no changes in grading, so that stayed the same. In the area of college career... Is it not letting? What? Here? Oh, my goodness, okay, sorry, I'm a little nervous. Okay, so in the area of CCMR, there are minor changes in calculation and that's only a cap on the sunsetting IBC, but the major change is going with the grading or the scaling. So like in these next slide, you'll see where... Sorry, it's paused. You'll see where in order to get an A before 2018 and 2022, we needed sixty points. But now you go to 2023 and that's a huge jump to eighty-eight. And to get a B, we went from a forty-eight to a seventy-eight and then from, for a C, thirty-nine to sixty-four. And then for a D, twenty-six to fifty-one. So that's going to be very impactful to our high school. In this sample school, you'll see the CCMR rating of... It's the clicker, guys, it's not me. Okay, so, so like you'll see the CCMR is a sixty-five for that particular sample and under the twenty-two rating, it scaled up to a ninety-one, giving that domain... So you see me clicking, right? It's not going, okay. So it's going to an eighty-seven, giving that sample high school a B. But with the new CCMR change of scaling, you'll see in this next sample, the same, everything else being the same, just changing that scaling, going from a sixty-five to a seventy-one with that new system, giving that campus a seventy-seven overall rating, making them a C. So just with CCMR, no other changes, that sample high school went with the same thing, just the accountability change from a B to a C. So you see how impactful that's going to be.
So explain what you mean by scaling because I want to make sure that they understand. So you're talking about the calculation. So you're using the exact same scores in twenty-two, you're inserting them into twenty-three year, and then you're using the calculation model that they have for twenty-three.
Correct. And we're only looking at CCMR. So we're not looking at graduation rate, we're not looking at anything else, we're looking at CCMR, the campus had a sixty-five in both examples. And the first one, it scaled over and made them a B with that scaling. Remember I told you it's a major change? That major change, that makes you an A to a B to a C. So in this second example, it went into changing that to, that's not me, is that you guys? Okay, so I'm like, whoa, what's happening here? Okay, so then that's the second example, that sixty-five, you see how right next to it with that yellow bar, it goes to the scale score of a seventy-one? So that's the big change right there, giving that whole section a scale score of a seventy-seven, making them a C. So it's very impactful, that's forty percent of that particular rating. So it is going to affect our high school.
Ma'am, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
So now that you break this down first, can you please go back to the previous slides? I think it's very important for everyone to understand the dynamics of how all this stuff works. Because, yes, ma'am, thank you so much. So if you go, if you look at the STAR performance, forty percent, CCMR forty percent, the graduation rate twenty percent. So that being said, okay, I know there's a lot of discussion right now at all levels of government dealing with the STAR versus other ways of educating our children, right? So my, I guess what I'm trying to wrap my head around now that this continuous changes over and over again, and I know COVID had a huge impact and we're still feeling the, you know, the, the effects of that and the kids are still trying to catch up, if I may say that. But what are we going to do as a district to make sure that we, we focus on these items? I mean, we focus on these areas to make sure that we can get our district into the next level? Because you know, I mean, it's very, it's very obvious, it's becoming more and more challenging.
Yes.
So as we will know, everybody knows that we have all these different types of, of schools now, you know, so, so my only thing is, and my only concern was, and it's just a concern, it's a minor, my only thing is, is, is once we start competing against ourselves in our district of having all these choice schools versus, you know, fine arts versus, I mean, how is all that going to, going to equate to this and how we're going to move in, in a positive direction so we can just promote that to our parents to provide them those, those avenues of instruction? Thank you.
Kathy Abrigo.
Yes, yes.
So when you look at elementary, and I think this is also going to progress through the presentation, but what you, when you look at elementary, what we really want to make sure that we do is that we give our kids a solid foundation of reading and math. That's what we need to do. So it doesn't matter if it's a fine arts academy, a global academy, or just a regular school, as long as we have that strong reading and math component and have that solid foundation for our kids, then that's what's going to help also with the CCMR eventually when they get into middle school. We've done a lot of things for CCMR this year. We saw a huge leap forward in CCMR this year because we put systems in place, including bringing it down, the TSI to the middle school, also doing PSAT at the middle school and then SAT prep, TSI prep. So we started ensuring that we were doing that. We also are looking at our CTE alignment. So that's a process that we have to stay on top of to provide those opportunities for our students so they are CCMR-ready when they leave our district. Because if they're not, if they're not academically prepared, then when they go into a university, they're going to start, and I've said this already before, so it's probably like very repetitive, they will start with foundational courses that are non-credit bearing. And those kids, eighty-eight percent of them, will not continue. Because if you start taking non-credit bearing courses and you can't pass college algebra and you stop there, the likelihood of you getting a degree is slim to none. So what we need to do is focus at the elementary and have a very strong reading and math foundation. And that's going to set that us for, I guess, our kids for success. So that's where it stops, starts. Now, we're here, when you're looking at the CCMR and you see the impact on that increased number, you see where we go from a B to a C. So that's why I've always posed, what is a B? What does a B really mean? Well, now they're telling you what it really means. The past B was not at the level that the B is now. That's where the ante has moved up by thirty percentage points. Think about it. So TEA's saying, we got to do better. You know, we have to make sure our kids are CCMR-ready. Because right now, our standard is so low and so our kids are leaving high school and they're not ready for college or career. So that's why this huge shift, it's an awakening not only for San Benito CISD, but it is for the entire state of Texas. And you're going to see through this model how the shifts impact our current accountability system. Have we, if we plug in our twenty-two numbers into twenty-three? Go ahead, Kathy.
And in continuation to what Mrs. Arvion is saying, seventy percent of our high school rating either comes from domain one, which is what I just showed you all, with a STAR performance, CCMR, or grad, and graduation, or you can look at school progress, how we grow our kids is another seventy percent, or we look at relative performance. And we're going to break all of those down for you all. So you start looking at, well, maybe we do have to shift our focus into school progress and looking at students, reading and math, and how we can grow them because maybe that's where we're going to get most growth. So it's just about looking at every which way we can help our students grow. So it's just about looking at every which way we can help our students grow. Any other questions on this part? Okay, so the next one is your graduation rate, and there is no change in calculation. There is a slight change in the grading or the scaling. It's a bit more rigorous. It's not me. Okay, so there it goes. So here you'll see how it's just a slight change. From 2018 to 2022, we were for an A, 96. That moved up to a 98. We need 98 in 2023. For the B, we went from a 94 to a 96. For the C, a 92 to a 94, and then for a D, an 86 to an 88. It doesn't seem like a major change unless you happen to be that 96, right?
And what is San Benito?
We are a 96.
96.4.
So we were to take our graduation rate right now from 2022 of a 96%, we would have a B in graduation.
So your next area is academic growth. Remember, I was telling you that 70% could either go from that top one to academic growth is the other one. So as far as a change in calculation, there is a new change in calculation for, we're going to look at annual growth, plus they're going to add the 45-45 success, so it's actually a good thing. And because of that change, there is going to be a change in the scaling. And so I'll show that to you in a minute. So once again, academic growth is going to look at... I think we need a battery. Okay. Is going to be based on the actual annual growth is how we grow our kids in the area of reading and math. And it's also going to look at the 45-45 performance, which is our kids that did not pass to did they pass this year? So we're going to get bonus points for that, and I will show you. Should I get closer? But then I can't.
Oh, I think you all can hear me right? So then, you look at the academic growth, um, that new...
Oh, sorry. With the calculations. So I'll show that to you. This didn't work. Why should I be pointing at that? So then, when we look at that top chart that you see there, you see the reds up in the left where it says low does not meet, high does not meet, low approaches, high approaches, meets and masters, and you see that same thing up at the top. So the left is looking at the STAR test from last year. The top is looking at the STAR test from this year, this new one. And so this new transition model is a little bit more clear because we know our cut points. We know if a student received this raw score, this is what they need to make that point. Everywhere in that table, the students are going to make points by either maintaining or growing. So as long as we maintain or grow our kids, we're going to be making those academic growth points. The only place that you do not see a change would be if you go from low does not meet to low does not meet. That is the only time. So, Mr. Lopez, when you were asking about, like, what is our change? That might be a different focus that we look at, that we start looking at now, is just looking at that academic growth, because all that's telling us is are we keeping our kids where they're at or growing them? And we should be, right? So that bottom part is the new part. That one is solely looking at your 45-45 performance, like the students that did not pass, did they pass? And if they passed, they're going to give us extra points for that. So like on this table that you're seeing, that annual growth summary, that green table up at the top, that's how they calculated the annual growth before. That didn't change. What changed was a 45-45 summary, and if we grew our kids, if they went from not passing to passing, we have extra points for that. And that table on the bottom with the academic growth domain two A, that is giving us our old annual growth points and our additional 45-45 points, which gives us a new annual growth score. In this example, it's a 67, but the, the number that you want for the A is an 85. Questions on this one?
These are just samples, right?
This is just a sample, yes, yes. This is just a sample. I'm glad you said that, yes. Okay, the next area is relative performance, and for the elementary and middle school, there has been no change. The change, of course, is happening to the high school. It's a minor change, but it's because of the CCMR. And so then that is also recalculated because of the CCMR for the high school. So the way this works is, and this is the other 70% that we could target for our, 70% of our accountability. So what this is, is it looks at student achievement. So like in this example, you have two campuses. They both have the same student achievement. And this student achievement is a 54. So that's the scale point that they receive, both campuses. You see those colors, the green, the blue, the grayish, purplish color. So that means like the green is an A, and as you can see, the point at your right is in the green, but the point over here on the left is like on the F. They have the same scale score of 54. The difference here is the economic... Okay, sorry. And I'm coming out on TV like this, right? Okay, so the economically disadvantaged portion of the one on the right, you can see that they're like at a 92%, and the one on the left is at a 18%. So it's, it's big when you say 54 score, scale points is an A because your economically disadvantaged rate is high versus a campus that is, that has like 15. So that's like comparing Sugar Land to San Benito, right? It's impressive to have that scale score if your economically disadvantaged status is high. That's what this is. So that's the relative performance, how you compare relatively to the economic disadvantage to another campus.
So, Mr. Cantu, what's our percentage?
Our eco-dis percentage right now at San Benito CISD is an 86.7. So we're closer to that 90%. So we can, that 54 mark in this example is pretty much where we would be within, in this domain.
But it still matters what your scale score is. So whatever you, you get, and then it just, again, relative performance. Okay, and the next area is domain three. In domain three, there is substantial reconfiguration for our calculation, and because of that, we have changes to our scaling. So one of the changes is a one-year change in calculation to our EAL proficiency. They did reduce the number size for each student group. So it used to be that you had to have at least 25 testers in that area in order to be considered, like in order to be a target group, and now that 25 moved to 10. So if you have 10 testers, that's a new target group. There are for each campus type, elementary, middle school, and high school, they did establish separate sets of targets. We're changing from a yes/no methodology to awarding grade-dated outcomes. So it used to be that you had a target, let's say it's 30, you met the 30, it was a yes. You didn't meet it, it was a no. Now they have these grade-dated outcomes that tell you, well, did you meet it here? And if it's here, then it's a point, then it's two points, three points, four points. So it's more calculation, more opportunity, but more rigorous attempt at it. And they went from going to multiple targets to just having four. We're going to have the all-student groups, the two lowest race/ethnicity groups from the prior year, so each campus will be different. And then the super group or the focus group, which includes your eco-disadvantaged, your special education, EB, homeless migrant, or foster. So they're going to be looking at those four categories for each campus as opposed to all of the targets that they used to have.
Which are RDA.
Yes, ma'am.
Reports for special populations.
So the next change, big change, may I add, is in the proportional weighting. So it used to be that every campus earned their, and this is what I was telling you all about, the 70%. So our campus and our district has, and I'm just going to click on these to get... Okay, so you would take your best of either domain one, domain two, or domain three. So whichever you did best, we, we got that a 70%. The other 30% came from domain three. So now the, then that's still going to happen, but the difference is that it's going to be proportional. So based on your campus and their, their amount of people, amount of testers, so as you can already imagine, who's going to hold the most weight for our district rating? The high school. The high school is going to hold. And so right now, I'm going to give you an example using our 2022 data. So just based on our 22, 2022 data, you have all of our campuses, you have the enrollment, and then you have the proportional weight. So as you can see, San Benito High School with the 2022 accountability data is going to give us 30% of our district weighting. And as you can see, all of the secondary campuses are up at the top with the elementaries on the bottom. Secondary campuses are going to account for 72% of our district rating, and then 28% of our district rating is going to come from our elementaries in this example using the 2022 data. So that's a big shift of what's going to change. So if we just look at our 2022 data, you'll see that at 2022, we had an overall rating of an 85 as a district, and our letter grade as a district was a B. But if we impose just that weighting, that proportional weighting on our score, you'll see that we would go to a 78 and we would be a C letter grade. And this is just based on proportional rating. It's not based on CCMR, graduation, none of that. It's just the proportional rating. So what was the timeline? So in early March, we received an updated 2023 A-through-F system framework. Then in late May or mid-May, we received a 2023 accountability manual, and it was just a draft because they were still making changes to it. May 22nd, we received early raw scores and supporting guidance. Our supporting guidance looked like this. If a student scored from here to here, they likely did not pass. If they scored from here to here, they likely passed. And then if they scored from here to here, they were in the zone of uncertainty. So we've been in the zone of uncertainty. The only good thing that came out of this, and the reason that this came out, was to assist us in summer school plans, EOC summer testing. But to say that we had solid information, we did, we lived in the zone of uncertainty. We're still there, actually, for our elementaries.
So this is why across the state of Texas, we haven't released or received any preliminary results.
Yes.
And now they pushed it back to August.
We just got notification today. We did get another pushback from TEA. Again, a lot of the data, a lot of the stuff they're releasing is very confidential. And TEA does let us know as a district to not release it to families or to anyone until they give us the final cut scores. Because this data is still being changed as they look at the whole state in general. Again, like Ms. Abrego just stated, this is what we have.
Sorry. There you go. Sorry about that. Like Ms. Abrego just stated, this is what they gave us. This is only for us to use for summer school, graduation, give us a sense of where we are, and to get those students moving forward if they need the assistance. So again, TEA...
I have a question, Mr. Cantu. Approximately, when are we going to get the results?
Ms. Abrego, you want to move forward on the time?
Yeah, and the timeline it'll show. Unless that changed today, so... Okay, so May 31st, we did receive preliminary scale scores and performance levels for EOC. It's preliminary because they can still change. There's still like score codes that we're entering and just different changes that are being made, so it's still considered preliminary. But at least at that point, it did give us an approaches, meets, and masters. They were no longer in the zone of uncertainty. At the end of May, TEA released the what-if reports. The what-if reports are that right now, in 2023, we're going to receive our 2023 ratings, right? All the campuses, and we like to compare, like, did we grow, did we not grow? And so what TEA did is they imposed all of the new changes for 2023. They put it on the 2022 data so that campuses can see what it would look like with their 2022 data if they followed the 2023. The only purpose of this is to give you an apples-to-apples. So I'm San Benito High School, and in 2022, San Benito High School is at an 81, giving them a B. Remember that your biggest changes in the accountability came in CCMR, graduation, which affects the high school. And then, of course, domain three, that affects everybody. So if you just look at San Benito High School, you see that with the 2023 new accountability system, they moved from a B to a D. That's huge, and they hold 30% of our proportional district weight. So for the district, what would that mean? That we went from an 85 to a 75. And again, this is a what-if. This is not the 2023 accountability. We don't have that yet.
This is putting the numbers from last year, the 2022 numbers, into the changes that they made this year.
I'm noticing Frank Roberts is at an F now, right?
Well, this is again, a what-if.
What-if, yeah, yeah.
They, if this was the accountability system last year, they would have been an F. Yes, sir.
Yes. Because remember, domain three did undergo a lot of changes, but the main changes that affected like big time was San Benito High School. So again, the only purpose of that is to give a campus apples-to-apples. Once they get their 2023 ratings, I can compare, I can see how I fare. Did I go up? Did I go down? Like, you know, what do I need to work on?
And just to follow up on that, Ms. Abrego, I know there was a message put out by our Commissioner Morath regarding these what-if reports, regarding the comparisons from last year to this year. Ms. Sevion, was that shared? I did share the video with Ms. Sevion to board members regarding, there is no comparison from 22 to 23. There, there, with all the changes and the changes in accountability system, we, we're not going to be able to say, okay, this is where we were last year, and this is where we are now, which is exactly why they wanted to put this chart out and kind of show us, okay, just because we were a B in 2022 does not mean that we were a B this year in this accountability system. So that was his main message, I believe it was at the 3:30 mark where he really focused on that, that part.
And the reason for the change, again, in the video, and he explained it very well, is because we were not getting our kids prepared for post-secondary. So if we're going to use this accountability system, which, you know, teachers, our staff, we look at our instructional framework, and we want to focus on this instructional system that's going to help them meet state standards, which is tested through the STAR. We want to make sure that it is really preparing them for college and for post-secondary. And right now, what's happening is we're seeing it's not. So they do a revamp, a reset of the testing system in Texas. So when you look at last year's scores, again, you're not going to be able to compare those scores to this year. It's very clear. And this what-if is something that you could look at and say, well, what if we were injecting those scores? Just scores, not the new tests that they took this year in 23. Just the scores, not the tests, right?
So, so, Mr. Cantu, I guess my question is, you know, going back to my previous statement, is, so by all these drastic changes, how is it going to affect our, our curriculum moving forward for our kids? Are we going to just come in strong and say, hey, listen, we're going to change the whole landscape? Because, you know, Mr. Morath said, this, this year and the next year changes something else. How are we going to do it so it's, it's a seamless process without affecting our kids drastically in the, in the, in the educational landscape of our, of our school district?
I think that, that's something we've been talking about ad nauseam all year long, is that we want to focus on true teaching and true learning. We don't want to teach to a test. So we are focused on deep, concept-based instruction. And that is another thing that we've brought in across the district with not only our high-yield teaching strategies, but also with our instructional playbook. So we looked at strong tier-one instruction. We looked at RTI, which I know Ms. Abrego spearheaded, and branching minds, so we could customize for kids that needed support. And so we wanted to be very meticulous about the support and about the instruction that was happening in the classroom, including our walkthroughs, our learning walk protocol, and rolling out that feedback in a non-punitive manner so that we can continue to grow and connect it to our professional development. Now, this year, we started with laying the foundation that is going to increase the rigor in third through fifth. Mr. Cantu, did you want to add something? Because our whole system has to change to the teaching and learning, not teaching for STAR.
And again, I just want to, what I will add is what we use as a district for our growth measure for progress, our NWEA map testing for assessments. That's something that we're really pushing out as well. That's something that we're really pushing out as well. It's been pushed out by our curriculum department, academics, and Ms. Abrego and Dr. McGee really pushed that out in order for our campuses to see where our students are, not necessarily just on STAR. Because again, can we really compare last year's STAR to a brand-new test? We can't. And we don't want the focus to be on teaching to STAR, teaching, teaching to the test. In our program with MAP, you can't teach to MAP.
Because what is MAP connected to? Meta-cognitive skills, problem solving. And so this is a great example of if we were just teaching to the STAR, the STAR changed. If we were just teaching that format, now it's online. Now you can't use those old paper pencil things. So this evolution is forcing us to look at our teaching and learning. It's forcing us to look at what's happening in the classroom and to up the ante.
So I'm, so I'm assuming, right, and it's fair to say, the progress that you guys already have made, you know, going this route, that our staff, our teachers and counselors, they're all going to get the additional support they need, you know, and the additional education to go down this route and support. Correct? Just so everything can come out, you know?
Yes.
Once again, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, going back to the, to the timeline, June 30th, so this week, TEA will release EOC results for families. So they're going to be able to go in and get their own from the data portal. Whoops. August 8th will be the final assessment report for EOC. August 11th will be the final assessment report for grades three through eight. And then August 16th, TEA will release grades three through eight results for families.
They can move. They can move definitely. Again, TEA today stated something about they're still looking at different measures that they're still trying to grade, in other words.
When you say different measures, it's not to increase. It's still to stay where they're at right now.
In the same aspect, sometimes, again, the state-
They're going to look at statewide trends.
Yes, that's exactly what I was going to say. They're looking at the statewide trends. It, it, it may change, but not much.
Were y'all hearing from other schools in the, in the valley and other parts of the state? They're having, I mean, probably the same thing, right?
Every school in the state is doing the same exact thing we're doing today. As many of you know, I sit on a board as well. And I can tell you from region two to region 19 to region 20, I mean, speaking with everyone I speak with, everyone is in the same predicament that we are here today. We don't know, we wish we did, and how can we prepare to move forward? So we're waiting on guidance from TEA. And as you can see, the guidance they provided a few weeks ago was likely or a zone of uncertainty. So that became a very big topic within the state of, wow, we're all in the zone of uncertainty. We don't know where we are.
Thank you.
So in late August, they will be receive, releasing the final accountability manual. So as you can see, it's still preliminary, like that can change. There's a lot of discussion still with that. And then September 26th, we're going to receive our 2023 A through F ratings and the updated what-if. Because if things changed from that draft and the release, the first release of the what-if, the updated ones will take over in September. So hopefully they look better. And then January 2024, they will release the final 2023 A through F ratings, our TAPER school report cards, and the federal report cards will be released at that point.
So with the dates in that timeline, you can kind of see TEA is holding on to the data to figure out what they're going to do with the state. Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Look, at this minute, we're going to ask for a, for a five-minute little quick break, a little recess at, at, at 7:06 PM. Thank you. We'll resume right now in about five minutes. Okay, reconvene the meeting at exactly 7:14. Let's move on to agenda number six, consent agenda under academic services, 6.1. Request approval of the memorandum of understanding, MOU, between San Benito CISD Police and Cameron County Children's Advocacy Centers, Monica House and Maggie's House on the 2023-24 school year. Ms. Elvion? Question? Consent? 6.2, request approval for the amendment of the memorandum of understanding, MOU, between San Benito CISD and the Neighbors in Need of Services Incorporated, Head Start slash Early Head Start Program for the 23-24 school year. Question? Consent? 6.3, request approval of the memorandum of understanding between San Benito CISD, Region One ESC, Texas Reading Academies for the 23-24 school year. Question? Consent? Request approval for the memorandum of understanding between San Benito CISD and the Community of Schools for 23-24 school year. Question? Consent? 6.5, request approval of amendment to the HOG grant foundation agreement. Question? Consent? Agenda number seven, consent from business and finance. 7.1, request approval of cash account report for May 2023. Question? Consent? 7.2, request approval of the comparison of revenue and expenditure for the budget report of May 2023. Question? Consent? 7.3, request approval for the tax collection report on May 2023. Question? Consent? 7.4, request approval for the check dispersals for May 2023. Question? Consent? 7.5, request approval of the option to renew the lease agreement for the San Benito District employees' uniforms. Question? Consent? 7.6, request approval for the 2022-23 final amendment budget. Question? Consent? Agenda number eight, consent agenda under administration. 8.1, request approval of the 23-24 compensation plan. Question?
Question?
Okay, question? 8.2, request approval of board minutes? Question? Consent? Can I please have a motion to approve item 6.1 through 8.2? Except for, except for, except for 8.1?
So move.
Okay, I got a motion by, I got a motion by Mr. Seba. Can I have a second?
Second.
I got a second by Mr. Fritos Gomez. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you. We got a question on 8.1, Mr. Madano.
I had a question on the, on the thing that Mr. Osagera asked for on the $100 carryover. Does it carry over, Mr. Gaios? Does it carry over?
Good evening, Board President Lopez, members of the board, and Superintendent Elvion. It is my, it's my understanding that it's not carried over, sir. That's a budget item, so it has to be expensed throughout that school year.
For that particular year, it doesn't carry over?
No, sir.
Okay.
What's the delay on the appeals if they go to appeal?
Yeah, yeah.
Let me go ahead and speak on that. So we put that, we put it on the campus budget because we had to be able to substantiate that expenditure and ensure that it was being expended on school supplies because that's the way it was delineated as a school supply budget. If we wanted to delineate it as something else, like a stipend, then I would suggest not to have that as a school supply, I guess, funding for our camp, for our campus teacher assistance and teachers. But right now, we need to be able to tie it back to a purchase order or a receipt of some sort.
So how can we do it to carry it over the next year?
We can.
You can, because it's budgeted in. Yeah, we have to budget it for next year.
Monica, did you want to add something?
I'm saying, I'm just-
Ma'am, so how do we do it? So I guess our, the question is, I guess maybe just the way it's labeled right now? Because I think sometimes, I mean, it's kind of offensive when, you know, our educators or people at the, at the district, all personnel that are educating our kids spend a lot of money, and we all know that. So it's kind of offensive to be asking them what they're going to spend the $100 on. You know, I, I think it's a, it's a, you know, we're just appreciating their hard work and their dedication. And I think just giving them whatever, however you want to label it. But for them to have to identify exactly what they're going to spend it on when they already spend their own money on a bunch of other things. So I think it's, you know, we pretty much know where it's going to go. It's going to go back to the kids and that's what it's for. So, I mean, that's exactly what that money's for. So I think if we need to label it a certain way, so we won't have to, you know, go that route of isolating every single penny that they're going to be using the dollar for.
Ms. Elvion, would we just have to change that verbiage as far as stipend to next month in order for them to receive it at the beginning of the school year?
And I'm just throwing that out there because I see Monica's looking at me. Because we have to, you know, we have to explain our budget and our expenditures to the IRS. And so there are certain things that we need to have in place, so.
I see.
Yeah, and remember, one of the items, this was one of the items during the forensic audit that they brought up because they were quoting cash and where they were delivering supplies. So then one of the items, I'll go back and look at what we were in the cash, I believe, was the property firm to see what they actually stated, they do and don't. And then also, remember that we are using as our funds for this supply money. So when they do a PO, it's tied back. And the fact that, like Ms. Elvion said, it goes through the teachers looking at what they want, what they need, and giving it to the campus secretary, then they have to submit their requisition and so forth, so.
I think what's happening though, is that a lot of these teachers are just going and purchasing what they need without having to wait, want to waste that time on a PO and so forth. So there's a work around it that we could find in order to give them this. I mean, it's a small amount, you know, give them that token at least before the school year. It'd be great if we could find a way to do that.
I'll look at the, like I said, I'll look at that audit finding from Weaver and/or the other report, I'm sorry, that Weaver had, that I think they presented it sometime-
Weaver in August. I believe they presented it like in August or something like that. I'll go back to see what particular items that they were concerned on. And then I can discuss it with Mr. Torres and see what he has any, shed any light on that and how we can do it.
I think the thing also is that we're using federal funds for this. So when you use federal funds, that makes it a little stickier. So if we wanted to reclassify those federal funds for something else and then use local funds for that, then we would have a little bit more leeway. But we would still have to have some sort of label or accountability system. Right, Ms. Bata?
Yes, definitely.
But we can look. Mr. Gaios, did you want to review what we changed recently so that they would know how we're going to go ahead and compensate our custodians and CMP staff? And then also talk about the adjustment to the teacher pay scale, please?
Hello?
There you go.
Thank you. So if you allow me, I'm just going to go briefly on, on some of the changes that we made to the 23-24 compensation plan. We're excited to bring this competition plan to you all because it already includes a 2% increase for all staff across the board, whether it's a teacher, whether it's a custodian, whether it's, you know, director, whether it's a principal. The pay scales have been adjusted with a 2% increase across the board from midpoint. So if we go to the teacher pay scale, the first change that you're going to see here is that we're changing the starting pay from $50,000 to $52,000. That's going to allow San Benito CISD to be even more competitive with surrounding school districts. So this $52,000 starting pay is in line with, like I said, surrounding school districts. Another change is all the teachers will be receiving a $1,200 pay increase across the board. So every teacher, in-house teacher, will be receiving a little higher than the 2%. Like I said, the amount will be $1,200. The steps one through four will receive a little higher increase only because we have to adjust the gap between those pays. So if you look at the gap right now, it's, the old pay is $50,300 step one, $51,348. So that's a $1,000 gap between those two steps. And then step two to three, it goes from $51,348 to $53,166, almost $2,000. So we have to close the gap, so that's why we're giving a little higher increase to those three steps. So that's the first change. Any questions on the teacher pay scale?
So that's going to start here in August?
Yes, sir. If approved by the school board, it's going to start in August. So continuing with the teacher, with the administrative pay scale, some of the changes that we're doing here is, Ms. Nancy Casas just talked to you about some of the cycle 12 grant. Because of that cycle 12 grant, we're adding new positions to the competition plan, which includes the specialist curriculum. So that's going to be paid out of that cycle grant. And it also includes the pay grade three, the assistant director for the after-school program. So thanks to Ms. Nancy Casas and her receiving that grant, we're able to post these two positions plus the seven coordinators that she's already hiring for the upcoming school year. We're also adding a face coordinator. Mr. Gonzalez goes above and beyond with his face department. But let's be honest, he has no time off. He works evenings on all his events. When he has to go to conferences, when he has to be out for some reason, he's always on call. He's like a nurse, he's always on call. So having a coordinator in place for that department would allow Mr. Gonzalez to have a backup. This person would allow Mr. Gonzalez, you know, to take over some of the events on, on their own. Like I said, he's always staying late. If you see Mr. Gonzalez, that's one that always works after hours on all his events. So this would allow Mr. Gonzalez to have not only a backup, but someone to assist him with all the department duties on a daily basis. We're also adding this one, I think is really important. It's on the pay grade four, a licensed professional counselor. I think we value the, the mental health of our employees. We value that, the well-being of our staff members. This licensed professional counselor is intended to work with all of our teachers, all of our staff members on our mental health. We've been thinking about it for almost a year. A lot of the people that went this year out on FMLA were because of mental health. They had a lot of, you know, issues going at home, issues at the campuses, personal matters. So this person can help them as a tool to, you know, alleviate some of those mental illnesses that they may be going through. Next page. We are also adding a at-risk position, administrative at-risk. That position will support programming for students who are identified at risk. We have some students, some classified at-risk, based on the 14 factors designated by TEA. The support will include identification of at-risk students, training staff on parameters, and maintaining records and overseeing case management. Do you have any questions on the administrative pay scale? Clerical technical, we're just adding, next page? We're adding the teacher, teacher APE. It was left out of the competition plan this year, so we're just putting it back in the competition plan. The next page. We have two additions. One of them, again, because of Ms. Nancy Casas 21st Century Grant, we're adding a secretary to the after-school program. That will be an additional position. Like I said, she's, she's got 11 new positions this school year. And then we're also adding lead parental specialist at the elementary and secondary level. So these lead parental specialists would allow, you know, to, they're going to be the in-between, the coordinator and the specialist at the campus level. So they're going to be the ones moving the information from, for all the campuses at the elementary level, for all the campuses at the secondary level, and also assisting with the daily operations of the department. One more change, we're renaming the clerk purchasing to a secretary purchasing.
I've got a question. Would you mind going back to the previous slide?
Yes, sir.
My question is, under item number five, the fourth registered HS, what does that mean?
Which one, sir?
What does that mean? Registered HS? Item number five. Yeah, registrar HS. What is that? Okay. Do you have one in each campus? Do you have one in campus or?
No, we only have one at the high school.
At the high school and BMA.
Just the, okay, thank you. I was wondering what that was.
Any questions on the clerical technical pay scale? And then the last change, we're really excited to bring this change to you all. On the auxiliary pay grade, we are moving the custodians. It's the next page. We're moving the custodians and the CMP associates from pay grade one to pay grade two. We had a meeting with them. There's a lot of concerns. We had a lot of vacancies this year that we couldn't fill because we will hire and then they will just work for three weeks or a month and then they will leave, hire and leave, hire and leave. So the custodians were, custodians and CMP associates, when we met with them, I think it was last week if I'm not mistaken, one of their biggest complaints is that not only they, they had to do their own job, but they also had to do somebody else's job because of the vacancies. One of the public comments today made was in reference to the 2%. Giving them a 2% would only be 27 cents. So all the in-house custodians and CMP associates will be receiving a $1.50 increase this year. Aside from moving from, like I said, pay grade one to pay grade two. So anybody coming in from the outside is going to be making $11.27 as a starting pay, which is competitive with Los Fresnos, Harlan Chin, not Brunswick because Brunswick's making like $16 an hour. But we're at least competitive with our enclose surrounding school districts. This would also, you know, alleviate, you know, will retain more of our employees with that $1.50 increase. And that would also attract new candidates coming in, you know, from Harlan Chin, Los Fresnos, or any other school district. I did the math, I don't know if you want to know the numbers. There's 98 custodians in-house right now. The cost will be $330,000, which is, I mean, it's only fair to them. And then the CMP associates, we have 82. The total cost will be $178,000. And then the CMP associates, we have 82. The total cost will be $178,000.
Sir, how many, how many custodians do we actually need so we can be comfortable throughout our school?
So right now, if I look at the vacancies, there's 109 positions, so, or 119. I'm not, I'm not really sure on the amount. So we had vacancies. So right now we have 98 custodians, which includes regular custodians and lead custodians. But we do have, I want to say like 15 to 20 vacancies that we need to fill.
Is there a criteria that needs to be met?
Actually, it's a good thing that you asked. This year we changed the job description for the custodians and the lead custodians. So before, the lead custodian needed to have at least a high school diploma in order to be a lead custodian because we couldn't find anybody and the ones that we had in-house had the talent to be the lead custodian, they weren't eligible because they didn't have a high school diploma. We removed the high school diploma and we just put preferred. If they don't have it, but they're in-house, they still qualify for that, you know, lead custodian.
But based on campuses, how many custodians are defined for the campus? Are there any criteria?
Yes, so it's based on square footage of the campus. So normally, I think we have at least four custodians per campus, three regular custodians, and one lead custodian. I think we, we meet the requirement for the most part in the elementaries, and I think we exceed the requirement at the secondary levels. So we really need to look closely at the staffing for the secondaries.
Mr. Gallegos, I'm more sure you guys have thought about this, but, you know, because of the shortage, and of course, this is going to get implemented here, you know, after today's meeting, is there any way that we can, we can somehow come up with a, with a, with a method to incentivize them more if they're doing more work? Like, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Like covering the vacancies, you mean?
Yes, sir. Some kind. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if it's possible. All I'm saying is that, you know, if they're short in certain areas or there's somebody that's out for a long period of time and they continue doing more work than everybody else, I mean, I think it's very obvious now it's, it's, it's better to save them or try to save them and try to come up with different ways and be creative to keep them, to keep them on board versus, versus them leaving and then we're going to be back to square one again, you know?
And you're absolutely right. We can look into ways of compensating those employees that are going to be taking additional vacancies or additional roles or duties and responsibilities. I do thank you for bringing that up to us. We'll look into it and then we'll propose something for.
Because I'm more sure, I mean, I'm more sure all the board, I mean, because this is an ongoing, you know, same thing like with cafeteria, you know, there's always vacancies, you know, and I think those are very important roles for, for, for the beautification and also the nutrition of our kids. So thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
With that, I move to approve this item.
If they're doing extra work and staying longer, the incentive there is time and a half, right?
Yeah.
And the only thing that we, as we met with them, was that number one, you know, they were taking up a lot of extra tasks. They were getting paid for it, but then there's a burnout of it, right? Because you're working too much. And then, then we talked about the COLA, you know, the cost of living increase that we should be focused on for them as, of course, costs are rising. So with that, we came back with Ms. Mata and we started crunching some numbers. So that $1.50 seemed like something that was doable and that it was fair. So I'm hoping that this does help our staff as we continue to meet with them. Mr. Gallegos and I are going to go out and meet with them again. So that we're also going to put some systems in place of where we noticed that maybe not all, I guess, standards were being followed across the board at every campus.
Question. This $1.50 applies to custodians. Does that apply to workers at cafeteria?
Yes, so it's going to be for custodians, lead custodians, and then anybody at the CMP level, which will be the CMP associates, the CMP managers, the executive chef, and I think the warehouse driver.
Mr. Gallegos, I'm sorry. What are we doing for maintenance? What are, for the maintenance department?
So we can review the maintenance. We haven't had that many vacancies in maintenance. But if that's an area that you all want us to review, then we can definitely review and see.
But you said the 2% is going to be straight across the board, including maintenance, including every department. Okay.
Yes, sir. They're going to receive a 2% increase.
Excuse me, Mr. Gallegos. I know that $1.50 is for all the custodians, but what about those that they're already at max?
So one of the things is when we implemented competition plan with a percentage increase, suppose anybody that's supposed to be over the max is not supposed to receive the increase only because they're already over at the max. But at that point, the board has to decide not to give an increase to those employees. That hasn't been the practice, you know, and not only in San Benito, but in any school district. Because we value our employees, we value the personnel that we have in-house and that we want to keep in-house. Even though they're over the max, we still give them an increase. But it will be up to the board if they decide, you know, to freeze their pay.
Yeah, and my other question is, I know we have custodians and teacher personnel and all across the district that they've been here for more than 25 years and, you know, they, they still consider underpaid. I think that's another thing that we have to consider, you know, look at their seniority, to see how long they've been with us, with the district.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you.
And any other questions? And then the last change before, I know I've been talking a lot. The last change is the, if you go to the stipends, the last page on the stipends.
But it's good news that you've been providing.
Well, it's good news because the board, you know, is working hard to provide these increases to all. One more, sir. It's going to be the last page on the stipends. Is the retention stipend.
So this is something that also we wanted to bring to you because last year, I know it was a $2,000 this year, Abraham.
So we had some public comments in the past in which, you know, employees are very grateful for the retention stipend and they're also very grateful for, you know, any other kind of compensation that we might offer them. So we are bringing back the retention stipend this year with the remaining Essar funds. There's the criteria. The criteria didn't change. It's the same as last year. The only thing that changed is the amount. Because of the amount remaining on Essar funds that we have, we are going to be giving a $1,200 stipend to every employee in the district. Full-time employee. Full-time employee and then the criteria says actively employed by September 1st, 2023, and must remain actively employed until December 1st, 2023. That was the criteria that we used last year.
That would be up for you all to review. This is what we're suggesting. We're also looking at how much we have left on Essar. If we wanted to dip more into the fund balance, then we could increase the $1,200. But we could bring you those figures as well.
Can we review, Mr. Gallegos, how many part-time employees we have? And if we could possibly cover it part-time, I mean, even if it's a...
50%.
I can give an estimate. I think we have around 200 to 300 part-time employees.
So I guess Ms. Mata would be the one to answer. We'd be able to sustain it. I guess we can talk about.
So, so, so we all know that Essar, we all know that Essar funds is, is transitioning out. So I, I think what we can do, and of course, I'm just speaking for myself, but I think what we should do honestly is, is, is dive into the Essar funds and where they're being utilized right now and see if we can abstract some more of that money and really take care of the staff that we have now. Because, because the way it's, the way it's, you know, it's very obvious the way it's going right now, you know, you know, to see how we can come up, you know, to be creative, to see how we can, we can take some Essar funds from somewhere else to take care of the staff that we have now versus losing them. And then, and then we're going to be back to this conversation again. So right now, you know, the thought is, and it's very, I mean, you know, Essar funds is Essar funds. They're not going to be here very long. The thing is, you know, but at least our staff knows that we're doing everything we can to take care of them for now because Essar funds are going away. So you might get it this year, but Essar funds is gone next year, so it's, it's done. But we took care of you when we, when we had an opportunity to, and we really appreciate you, you know. So I think that's something that, you know, because you don't want to leave anybody out because everybody's integrated. Everybody's a vital, you know, key player in making this organization work. So, you know, we're just focusing on a group of people here, then it's going to create a morale issue. And we're not about that, you know, we're out, we're out about being fair across the board and making sure that we retain staff. I mean, you know, so I, I don't, I mean, it's just something to think about. I don't know how long you guys can come up, how long it's going to take you all to formulate something.
We cannot squeeze any more out of Essar because we already tried to squeeze. And we went through it with a fine-tooth comb. So it's not going to come from Essar, and that's why I want to make it very clear it would come from fund balance. Okay? Because there's no way, we're committed with the Essar. Some of it is our salaries that we're still transitioning out. So we did look exactly at how much we had in carryover from federal, which we use that as well. We looked at Essar. We went, looked down to every single last cent. And again, we would have to go into fund balance if you want the increase and you want the part-time employees. We can give you those metrics, those figures, and we can come back with those.
So what we can do is we can revise this, I guess, as verbiage on the retention stipend and include, you know, if you all agree, the part-time employees with a different amount.
Yes, please. Yeah. So, so, okay, sir. Yes, sir.
Definitely look at, definitely look at it.
Probably, probably at half, at least. I mean, at least at half.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And before I, mandame? Before I go, I know I already talked a lot. I want to say thank you to not only the superintendent, the administrative team, but also to the board members who made possible this 2% increase for all staff. I know that a lot of our employees were very anxious, you know, because they hadn't heard anything about the increases. They heard about Harlan Chen, they heard about Los Fresnos, Brownsville, you know, surrounding school districts. So thank you all for making, making sure that our staff is taken care of, and thank you for looking for the best interest for all of our staff.
You're welcome, Mr. Vez.
Yes, sir. I will continue. Thank you. I appreciate it. So I got a motion on the floor by Mr. Oscar. Can I have a second? I have a, by Mr. Silva. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, let's go to action, agenda number nine, action agenda 9.1, discussion and consideration of possible approval of the gift or bequest for, for 22, 23 school year. Mr. Vion?
Yes, I recommend the board approve the gifts and bequests for the 22, 23 school years as outlined.
The motion?
Sommo.
I got a motion by Mr. Frutoso Gomez. Have a second.
Second.
Got a second by Oscar. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. On 9.2, discussion and consideration of possible approval regarding the purchases over $25,000. Mr. Vion?
Yes, I also recommend the board approve the purchases of over $25,000 as outlined.
I have a question on it. Mr. Vion, are these for the whole year, all these vendors for the whole year?
What page are you looking at, sir?
Where all the vendors are at?
Page 20.
Yes.
To be exact.
Because there's, there's like CD of San Benito Water Service, Cameron County Appraisal District, $230,000.
That's money, money is budgeted or?
Money is budgeted or what is it for?
It's budgeted. Monica?
It's budgeted for the... Yes, I'm trying to get to that page, but yes.
This page, right?
Yeah, it's the one that says it starts with AIM Media.
Come again?
It starts with the vendor AIM Media.
AY, yeah, AVN, yeah.
Yes, this is the expenditures. This was actually brought to you all every year. And this is just to minimize the amount of $25,000 and over purchases. And we just modified it from last year and either we looked at the expenses and this is money that's already budgeted. Oh, no, no. We issued a requisition, an open blanket requisition at the beginning of the school year. And then they're paying off of it every month or as services are performed or supplies are bought and so forth.
Thank you, Ms. Mata. I move to approve.
Okay, I got a, I got a, I got a motion to approve. Second by Mr. Silva. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. All right, let's move on to a 9.3, discussion and consideration for the possible approval of the holidays.
Okay, so this is for our 260-plus employees. I recommend the board approve the holiday schedule calendar for the 20, I'm sorry, for the 260-plus employees as outlined.
Sommo.
I got a motion by Mr. Frutoso. I got a second by Mr. Medrano. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you. On 9.4, discussion, consideration, and possible approval of the agreement between San Benito CSD and Brownsville ISD Adult Continuing Education.
Yes, I recommend the board approve the agreement between San Benito CSD and Brownsville ISD Adult Continuing Education as outlined and presented.
Sommo.
I got a motion by Mr. Frutoso Gomez. Can I have a second?
Second.
I got a second by Mr. Silva. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. On 9.5, discussion, consideration of possible approval of the inter-local agreement between San Benito CSD and Cameron County.
Yes, I recommend the board approve the inter-local agreement between San Benito CSD and Cameron County as presented.
Can I have a motion?
Sommo.
I got a motion by, by Mr. Silva. I got a second by Ricky Corona. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. On 9.6, the consideration of possible action for general counsel legal services agreement. This item was, was already approved but brought back to the board for, for, for approval.
Can we discuss it in executive session or?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Well, actually, you can't.
No, we need a vote on this.
It has to be voted on. It was already approved, so we're just, it was, the board had given it. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a question?
I had some, you had made some recommendations, Mr. Vion, on, on the, on the contract.
Oh, I had outlined some stuff that you all might focus on. I think that there, I don't have the contract with me.
Can I, can I make it, I had a question, so if you don't mind, can I ask a question? And, and the question is directed to Mr. Torres because I looked at the contract and just to go over it. And I, I just need some clarification. And in the middle of the paragraph, can I go ahead and read it? That way we can, okay. That's number two, attorney's authority and obligation. And my question, my question is, let me read this. I can, I want to be able to understand and be able to get clarification from Mr. Torres. Says attorneys are further specifically authorized to make and accept communications with or from all parties, witnesses, adverse, hostile, or friendly to clients who have reason to contact attorney or has reason to contact concerning client or in any matter and or claim of clients referred to attorney under this agreement, including referral of administrative matters. I guess my question is, can you clarify that for me? Try, what it means? I appreciate it.
Either by the administration or the board. This authorizes me to work with either administration and/or the opposing party, either if they're pro se or if they have counsel. So once a matter is referred to me, this allows me to communicate with all parties, friendly or hostile.
Okay. Does, does that mean you would, if somebody called you?
It has to be regarding, I understand the concern. I know where you're going. It has to be a matter that's referred to me and a pending legal issue regarding the school district. Somebody calls me from the community about a potential concern, that's not covered, sir.
Thank you. That's, that was my concern. Okay. And the other question I have, if you don't mind, would be the last paragraph. It says, client hereby, let me put my glasses on. It says, client hereby also specifically authorizes in consent to attorney's association and or referral to another attorney or law firm that attorneys believe necessary to help assist. I think that's pretty clear. Is, is that something?
I wouldn't be able to make a, make a board meeting, for example.
I got it.
And I have someone from my firm sit in, or if I need to refer a matter of specialty, of course, I'd speak to the board before that, but this also authorizes me to do so in a rate not to exceed my own. In, in the event it would be above that, it would need board approval. So my rate's $25,000 now, and so it would not be able to exceed that.
Thank you. That's, that was my concern, kind of, want to be able to understand what your contract says. And the other one is the 225, which is, I understand what Mr. Weller was getting paid. That's what I understood from, you know.
No, I can't.
No, actually, this is below.
Okay, okay. Well, okay. Thank you for the clarification. And then this is 225 an hour. So if somebody would call you, myself, or Mr. Vion, or a member of the board, is it the 225 hour? Is that, or is, or do you prorate that if I speak to you for 10, 15 minutes?
Well, it's, it's in six-minute increments, sir.
Oh, okay. All right, all right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Is there, is there a fee that we pay, like, so he can cover the phone calls and all this stuff?
There's no retainer.
Retainer, there's no retainer.
There's $0 for retainer.
Okay. Thank you so much. I think you clarified it for me. Thank you.
Because it's hourly rate, so it's not retainer. There's two different ways to pay an attorney.
All right.
Can I have a motion?
Sommo.
I got a motion by Mr. Corona. Can I have a second by Mr. Frutoso? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, let's go to 9.7, discussion of possible action to terminate Beekler and Associates PC agreement. So, so I put, I asked to put this on the agenda because there was a, a couple of board members that had some questions regarding it. And I think it's only fair to discuss it now that we got a new general counsel. I think we really need to focus, back to your point, Mr. Medrano, this, they do have a retainer.
This is a retainer, right?
So, so, so the thing is that we need to start delineating who's doing what. So if, if, you know, for example, this firm here, I think they have in their agreement, if I'm not mistaken, I think they have the possibility of doing some general work as well versus administrative or special ed. So we really need to focus on, 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 on figuring this one out. And that's the reason I put to terminate it because the contract is just, it's open-ended. So we already have a general counsel. We just approved of his contract. So now we really need to focus on this one and not give them, you know, leeway just to come in and, and, and provide all different kinds of services when we already have it.
Mr. Beekler's in charge of what, Mr. Vion?
So what Mr. Beekler...
So what Mr. Beekler is primarily in charge of is assisting with our HR matters.
Okay.
And so his wife, Mrs. Beekler, is helping us with any special education issues. We do have them on a retainer, which is six thousand dollars a month, that equates to twenty-six hours of work a month, uh, but they, if it's over, which it usually is over, um, we don't pay any more than six thousand. So anytime we call them, or anytime we need them to generate something for us, or to handle a situation, whatever time it takes to get it done, that's the time that's put in without additional above and beyond the six thousand.
In your opinion, do you think we need them going forward, or?
I feel that retaining them currently, because we're in the middle of several uh situations, would be advantageous to the administration and most importantly, to the district.
Okay.
When you're saying that we're in the middle, what, what you're referring to, what, what is it that they're taking care of that our general counselor, or Mr. Salazar, or anybody else could not entertain?
Well, for example, we have uh some pending grievances that Mr. Beekler represents the administration specifically, and not the board, and so I feel that that neutrality that he brings in and has been working with administration from the ground up with that situation would be something that we need him for. So you've been in grievances before where we have a level-three grievance, and you see that, uh, before it was Walsh, right? So we had Walsh in there, and then we also had our board counsel in there, so the board counsel would advise the board versus the counsel for administration would advise and defend the administration's stance.
So isn't the general counsel defending the administration?
The board.
The board.
In those situations, the board.
Okay. A question. Uh, how long do you think that, I mean, that, that you would need him? Two months, three months? Would it be something that we could look at that way and say, hey?
The longevity of it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't, I mean, I know that we have some pending uh issues, I know that I've shared them also with Mr. Uh Torres, and Mr. Torres has reviewed them as well, uh, for the board's, um, I guess, side of it, because it will be a level-three grievances that would be coming up. I don't know, I would, if I had to, I guess, ballpark it, two to three months, then maybe we would have those um done.
Can we take that?
Is this something, is this something that, that Mr. Torres could cover?
Well, Mr. Torres, how do you feel about covering for the administration and the, and the board when we go back there and we do those level-three grievances?
Well, there, there has to be a separate, there's.
There has to be a separate attorney, correct?
We usually, in the past, we provided that separate attorney, it, it's a matter of who the board wishes to represent administration. At the end of the day, the board retains attorneys, so it's, it's who you guys want advocating for administration.
I say let's wait for two months, and then we'll, we'll discuss that.
Yes, so my issue is this, okay?
Go ahead.
My issue is not the service, my issue is the agreement. So the thing is, I, I need, I need, if you guys don't mind, okay, I need Mr. Torres to evaluate the agreement, just to make sure that, that, that Beekler is not getting, is not doing general, general.
General counsel.
Yes, sir. So, so that's my issue with this, that's the reason why I'm assuming.
So right, so right now, it's, it's worded general education law and disabilities law. So, um, it's certainly something I could visit with Ms. Vion about.
Can we table this?
Based on, based on the conversation, discussion of the board to limit their scope, uh, maybe just include language pertaining to grievances, HR matters, and disability law matter, I mean, I can work with that with superintendent and bring it back to the board at the next meeting.
Just for transfers, uh, purposes, what is the amount you said on the retainer? What is that amount?
Six thousand a month.
And is that for both, or is that for each one of them?
Both.
For both, okay.
It's for Beekler and Associates.
Okay, thank you.
And they're paralegals.
Well, you all should discuss, I wanna, you and Mr. Torres.
Yes, okay. So I have a motion to table by Mr. Frutoso Gomez, can I have a second? Second. I got a second by Mr. Silva, all in favor, raise your hand.
What was the motion?
What was the motion?
To table.
Oh.
Yeah, to table for the discussion.
Did they have to word it differently that you and I would, no, that's fine?
Yes, sir. Okay, so motion carries, the motion, okay, let's move on to nine point, discussion of possible action to authorize administration to solicit requests for qualifications for, for agent of record for employee health, pharmaceutical stop loss, and all voluntary products. So this was, was also put on the agenda, you know, uh, simply to provide continuous better service for the school district. So, so basically, all this is just to give administration to go out, to see what's out there, and see if we can get better deals for the district.
So do we have a, do we have a contract, or when does it expire?
Mr. Trevino, right?
Yeah.
He's got to what?
He says October, I think it's October.
So, so, this basically, just, yeah, exactly, just basically, just taking that out to the board, we can get competitive, competitive rates and see what's out there.
Can we make a motion to go out for RFQs at this moment?
Yeah, that's what it is, yeah, request for qualifications, what it is. Yes, sir. So I got a, I got a, I got a motion by Mr. Corona for.
RFQs?
Yeah, I got a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
I got a second by Mr. Mr. Alex Anak, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries, thank you. Uh, nine point nine, discussion and consideration of possible action regarding the contract claim for Brian Group, we're gonna go ahead and take that to executive session.
We're, we're gonna need a motion.
Okay, can I have a motion for that? So move.